Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Mark Bowns who has some great school board spotlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gann. Welcome to our superintendent and board members. As you can tell, we have lots of spotlights. That means that there's some really wonderful things going on in District 5. We're so proud of them. Before we get started with the formal spotlights, I'd like to introduce Matthew Bonnet. He's a senior at the Center for Advanced Technical Studies to make a special presentation to the board.
My name is Matthew Bonnet. I am currently serving as the Vice President of our FFA chapter at the Center for Advanced Technical Studies. And we have been, for the past, since August, growing poinsettias in our greenhouse. It's all been student-driven and student-wrapped. And we would just like to present to the board, as a thank you for your support, to our program and to our FFA chapter, the poinsettia set in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're so blessed in District 5 to have an outstanding foundation that supports the work that we do. It's my pleasure now to introduce the Vice President of the District 5 Foundation for Educational Excellence, Dr. Mary Kinnerly.
Thank you. It is a great privilege every year to award grants to students from all of our high schools who are doing individual science and leadership research projects. And we're going to give some big bucks to some of those students tonight. We'll do half of them tonight and the other half on January 23rd. We had so many who are doing these projects which are extremely innovative. The work these students are doing is going to contribute very positively to the future for all of us. I'm just extremely impressed with what they are doing. I want to say a big thank you to their parents, who have given a lot of support, assistance, and encouragement. So if you are a parent, would you stand up and let us say thank you for your giving us these students and the help that you have given them this evening? And when your student's name is called, you can stand up again and give a big hurrah if you want to. I also want to say thank you to the administrators who have made this possible, and a great thank you to the phenomenal teachers who have helped these students get to the place that they are able to do the kind of research that they are. I'm going to call each one of the teachers' names, and they will present these big checks to the students tonight. Julie Cruzen is the biomedical science teacher at the Center for Technical Studies.
All right. Thank you, guys. So first, we'll call Bryce McLaurin. Bryce is receiving $491. Bailey McMahan. And Bailey's receiving $350 for her work. Next is Leanna Mentes. Priyanka Patel. Bethany Quinton. Emily Richardson. Hannah Schaefer. Ava Strube. Ashley Talbert. Al. India Wanamaker. And Chris Yamashiro.
Thank you and congratulations. I'd like to ask Mr. Patrick Smallwood, who is the Alternative Sciences and STEM Introduction Teacher at the Center. And a big thank you to both of these teachers.
Next student is Megan Ainsworth. Austin Emeral. Hunter Bristow. Joshua Keller. Zach Kokert. Jose Lopez. Noah Rao. Tyler Schultz. Lee Seitler. Brandon Snyder. Hayden Spencer. Brian Tran. And Isaac Vardy. And just a special thanks to Mary and the rest of the foundation for always supporting our research with our students at the Center. And thanks to the four high schools in the district for sending their students to the Center for Advanced Technical Studies and allowing instructors like Ms. Cruzen and myself to do independent research with them. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have one more grant to award to the student in the Leadership Academy at Chapin High School, and Lisa Mailith is the teacher. Okay, is Matt Hooker here? Yes, Matt. Great. Congratulations, and again, thank you to all of the parents. Thank you to all of the teachers and administrators who make this possible.
And Board, I know we hate to move you around, but these students deserve a picture with our Board, so if you would indulge us and please go to the top of the steps and stand behind these great students, we'll get one shot of the whole group together. And students, I'm going to ask you to hold up your checks, not in front of your face, but hold up your checks so that we can all see them.
Students, you can remain seated. Students, stand up, let's see what that looks like. That's good. That's much better. You should be able to see Mr. Phillips' face. Everybody ready? All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Let's give all these students a big round of applause. Many of these project students have done in the past have gone on to be patented. And Board, we're not finished with you yet. And now, it's my pleasure to honor two outstanding cheer teams. First, Dutch Fork Cheer Team won a state championship. It was a year of redemption for the Silver Foxes, who clinched the 5A state championship. Dutch Fork fell four points short of winning last year in a really close competition, and earlier this year were one point off a win in qualifying. But when it really counted, the Dutch Fork Silver Fox Cheer Team prevailed and won the state championship. Would Coach Katie Nunnery and her team please come forward to be recognized? Dr. Greg Owens was awesomely when he asked about this accomplishment. He said he couldn't be more proud of Coach Nunnery and our cheer teams. They demonstrated perseverance, dedication throughout the year, and all their hard work in the end paid off. And we didn't clinch one state championship in cheerleading, we clinched two. Chapin High School clinched the state cheer championship. This marks the 11th state championship under Coach Williams, who took over the program in 2002. The Eagles have now won eight of the last nine years of state championship. It's phenomenal. Chapin High School becomes the first program in South Carolina history to clinch state championships in Double-A, Triple-A, and now 4A. "This is a remarkable accomplishment," said Principal Akil Ross. "Maintaining this level of excellence year after year is a tribute to Coach Williams, cheerleaders past and present, and supportive parents and school community." Where our cheerleaders please come forward to be recognized. And now, the parents of any of our cheerleaders that are recognized, please stand to receive some recognition for all you do. Thanks to the parents for their support. And we're going to ask our Board to, we're going to get a picture with Dutch Fork and then Chapin, and then both squads together. I think it's good if they stand.
Okay, everybody look at me. Okay, everybody. Bryce Phillips. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Our Board can just switch over to the same one on Chapin. Everybody ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Four, five. Now, our cheerleaders could just switch together. Deep Rock Strong. All right, everybody ready? Looking straight ahead. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Congratulations to the best cheer district in the state of South Carolina. To our Board, I promise you won't have to go up in steps again tonight. Our next spotlight for this evening goes to the Irma Middle School Band Director Lori Turner, and she has been named as a Music Ed Idol. Turner was selected as one of 21 awardees in the nation as part of this honor, and she'll receive a $1,000 grant for Irma Middle School for their music program. Music Ed Idols are grants made possible by 21st Century Givenot Foundation. They're created in honor of the legacy Fox American Idol television show, the cultural phenomenon that many of us know. But more importantly, Ms. Turner gives music, brings music to life for our students. Would she please come forward to be recognized? Congratulations, Ms. Turner. I hope you can tell this has been a really great month for District 5. And now, it's my pleasure to announce or re-announce that we had two Principals that were recognized as South Carolina Principals of the Year out of the three possible levels. First, Dr. Gerald Gary, the Principal of Dutch Fork Middle School, was recognized as a South Carolina Middle-Level Principal of the Year. Dr. Gary, please come forward. Dr. Gary's in his fourth year as Principal of Dutch Fork Middle. He said this is a very humbling, awesome experience to be named the Middle School Principal of the Year. And acknowledge other Principals in the state and the district. And Dr. Akil Ross from Chapin High School was recognized as Secondary Principal of the Year. Dr. Ross is in his six years as Principal of Chapin High School, and said this is truly an honor to be named the 2017 South Carolina Principal of the Year by SCASSA. Perfect. Dr. Gary, if you would go ahead and join Dr. Ross. It doesn't happen very often that we have both Principals. That's great. Congratulations to our Principals. Well, if you watched the news last week, you saw that we had a very great honor in the district. Nursery Road Elementary School teacher Vanessa Torres was presented with the Milken Educator Award for Excellence in Teaching. This was a surprise for her to receive this award and a check for $25,000 in front of a PAC school assembly on December 6th. Torres is South Carolina's only recipient of the Milken Educator Award this year, and she's among 35 honorees nationwide. And this marks the 30th year the Milken Educator Awards have been offered, and they're hailed as the Oscars of Teaching. Ms. Torres, if you please come forward to be recognized by the Board. Ms. Torres is in her fifth year of teaching at Nursery Road, and she said she's in utter shock to receive this award. Dr. Jane Foley from the Milken Foundation said that Torres ignites a passion for learning in students at Nursery Road Elementary by infusing the rich language of Spanish into students' education and makes connections across the curriculum. She's enhancing students' experience and instilling life lessons of cultural respect. We're going to get a picture? And Ms. Torres has asked for a moment of personal privilege to speak at the mic.
Buenas noches. I just wanted to say that last week, receiving the Milken Award was the most amazing award I have ever, and most greatest privilege and honor I've ever received in my entire life. And I just want to publicly say that I am, my heart is so full of gratitude right now to God for placing me in Nursery Road Elementary School with Ms. Legons as my principal, giving me Kathy Stafford as my World Language Coordinator, giving me you all as my Board, Dr. Hefner as the Superintendent. And, you know, I know the value in what I do in teaching our children Spanish. I mean, I know and I've seen, I've read the research, I've seen in my kids, the value of children becoming bilingual and how it improves their whole life and sets them up for future success. But I wondered, before last Tuesday, I wondered, do other people value what I do? And now, there is no doubt in my mind that, yes, it is valued, what I do. And I just want to publicly thank you all for tirelessly working as a Board to provide all the needs that we teachers have, the material needs, but also the in-material need for validation, appreciation, respect. And I feel that you all do a great job at giving us that, and that is what makes all the difference in a teacher feeling the drive to move forward. So thank you for what you do, because when you lift up teachers, like what you did for me last Tuesday, you're lifting up our children. And when you lift up our children, you're lifting up this whole nation. So God bless you, and I just want to say that you are officially on the Torres Hot Tamale Train. And in my classroom, when students do great things in Spanish, they're on the Hot Tamale Train, and they win all kinds of fabulous prizes. So I have some prizes for you all today. I have little moracas. They are little peaching moracas for each of you, and I have a card for you. But just wanted to let you know, this is a small memento, to let you know that there's a Spanish teacher here in our district that thinks the world of you all and that is very proud of the excelente trabajo that you have been doing. So keep it up. And muchas gracias. So this is, I'm going to pass this, and you all can have it. Thank you again.
And now, for those of you that weren't at that special moment, if our Board would come forward, we're going to show a really short video of that surprise moment when Ms. Torres found out that she was a Milken Award winner. If you'd put the screen down, and...
The Milken Educator Award goes to Vanessa Torres! Ms. Torres seems a little overwhelmed right now, but I would like to ask her a couple questions. We know that your goal is to get students excited and to embrace the Spanish language and Spanish culture. Why is that so important to you and for your students?
Español es chévere, ¿sí o no? And I know that español is not just something that you learn here. It's something you learn with your heart, and it's something that opens doors to you to make friends all over the world. It's opening doors to you to make more jobs, more money. We talked about this at the beginning of the year. Your whole life can change when you know another language and learn about another culture. And South Carolina has the fastest-growing population of Hispanics in the whole United States. So you know that by the time you get out of school, there's going to be a lot of Latinos in South Carolina. ¿Sí o no? Sí! So you need to speak español to communicate with them.
So we heard that your classroom is still with singing and dancing and storytelling. Can you give us an example of an activity or a lesson?
Well, we start off with some español. Can everybody levantarse? ¡Hola! ¡Los Latinos! ¡Hola! 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 ¡Hola!
That was something... That was something awesome. Congratulations to Ms. Torres. Thank you so much. And Board, we have just a few more things to do before we finish our spotlights this evening. Well, we've seen we have great students and great cheerleading teams and athletes and teachers and administrators. We also, as Ms. Torres said, have just an outstanding board, and we're going to recognize two of our board members this evening. First, Mr. Larry Halterwanger Senior has earned recognition by the South Carolina School Boards Association for Achievement and the Association's Boardsmanship Institute. The Boardsmanship Institute was established in 1982 and offers year-round training curriculum to help board members develop skills and stay abreast of state and national education issues. Workshops focus on school law, advocacy and legislation, improving board operations, and leadership for improving student achievement. Mr. Halterwanger has earned a Level 2 pin and certificate. Presenting that this evening is our board chair, Mr. Robert Gant. And we'd also like to recognize Board Member Beth Hutchison, who earned Level 6 recognition earlier and was actually given her award at another ceremony, but we didn't want to pass this by, because only seven board members in the whole state this year earned a Level 6. Level 6 is the highest recognition of Boardsmanship Institute offers. To qualify for Level 6 recipients must earn at least 300 points for participation in training sessions over the past five years. Congratulations to Ms. Hutchison. And finally, I'd like to call our superintendent forward to make a really special presentation to our board.
This award was officially presented at the conference of the South Carolina School Boards Association, but I think our community needs to know about this award and the honor that our board achieved. Our board won the 2016 South Carolina School Boards Association Legislative Advocacy Program of the Year Award, and I'll just mention some of the comments that were made at the statewide meeting. And the board won this accolade because the board, with the assistance of others, developed a detailed presentation regarding school funding. And of course, much of that work, most of that work was done by our own Ed White. The presentation, which was given to community organizations, business leaders, and elected officials, outlined the impending fiscal, financial crisis and its potential effect on our district. In addition, our board invited several other school districts with similar funding issues to a meeting where they discussed the funding shifts and the negative fiscal impacts on districts. The board arranged and conducted meetings with the state superintendent of education and key legislators individually and in small groups that included hosting a legislative breakfast meeting. Although the state final budget did not address all of the relief requested by the district, it did result in an improved financial picture for the district and for public education in general. And for the first time in many years, the district was able to provide a cost of living increase for its employees. On behalf of all of your employees here in the district, we thank you for taking the leadership in making our financial needs known to the state policymakers, and commend you for the work that you have done, and applaud you for your receipt of the Legislative Advocacy Program of the Year. Congratulations.
Sir, would you join them for a picture?
Before we leave the subject, Mr. White, the whole board was in attendance in our superintendent when this was awarded, but we made known to the whole assembly that you were the push behind this whole effort, and we really appreciate that. You've analyzed it, you presented it, and I saw you come in from Atlanta, right in time for a meeting or two and other venues. So, I want to say to you personally that this board thanks you for leading the charge. We made that known to our whole assembly, and we want you to do it again and again. Thank you so much.
Well, you know, one thing that I thought about after I walked in here, this was where the idea was actually hatched, in this auditorium, at a meeting right after budget, and we were looking at how bleak the future was, and I raised the question with the board, we really need to start talking to the legislature. But it all happened right here on this stage, and at least the idea was born, so it's kind of nice to come back. We've all come full circle, and we've got something to say for it.
Thank you all, and Ed, thank you for leading the charge.
And sir, this concludes our spotlights.
Before we approve our agenda, I just want to let you know that I think the whole board has received these compliments, and Dr. Hefner mentioned it a minute ago, but I want to say I've been touched by the people that have come forward on behalf of their school or themselves individually and said, "Thank you very much for what was able to be done this year, especially the loyalty bonus that was a few weeks ago." So, on behalf of the board, I know we've all received those comments. We were glad to be in that position for once in a long time, so we really appreciate the work you do every day. We wish we could show it more often, but that's, the notes that you've sent have really touched me. A lot of you have taken time to write notes and have turned it to the whole board, so thank you very much. And that brings us to the approval of tonight's agenda.